This meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Ricardo?
Here.
Commissioner, Vice President Pamares, absent. Commissioner Sebo?
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Here. This meeting of the Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. This meeting is being livestreamed in addition to taking place in person. Everyone, please stand and salute the flag. I'm going to ask Commissioner Sebo to lead us in to salute.
I salute the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal rights for, for liberty and justice.
And please standing for a moment of silence for all the senseless killing that's going on, mass murder in the United States and police involved murder as well. Thank you. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. So at this point, I want to, of the meeting, I would like to recognize some very important people who are working in our office for the summer. Each of them are either in an undergrad program or recent graduates. They all hail from Essex County and represent the hope of our future. I would like them to stand so that they can, you can see them. I had an opportunity to sit down with them and I was very impressed and encouraged by their interests and ambitions. So I hope each of you have, are having quality experiences and I'm glad you are having the opportunity to sit in on an actual meeting. These are our summer interns. Thank you so much for being here. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Mr. President, there are none.
Madam Clerk, are there any topics of discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. There is a report from William Pasquale of Princeton Public Affairs.
Let's get Mr. Pasquale to the microphone. Mr. Jackson, please introduce him.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. Pasquale is a principal with Princeton Public Affairs. They are longtime consultant to the county government and matters of government affairs and he's here this evening to bring you an update on the activities of the firm and to answer any questions that you may have for him. Mr. Pasquale.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, members of the commission, good evening. Wish I could say happy 4th of July to all of you, but what a weekend it was. It was really refreshing, sir, members of the commission, to walk in here and see dear friends from the CWA who contribute so much to public service. We salute you. Mr. President, I want to, I'm here to thank the board. I've been with my firm for 29 years and for all 29 years, I've been honored to represent this county. When I started as particularly Commissioner Sebold and Gill know, I was a Patterson resident. Now I'm an Essex County resident. I live in Roseland, Mr. Luciano's district, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm well represented here. It's an honor to not only represent you, but also be a citizen of this county with my family. Mr. President, you have awesome business to take care of tonight. I just want to express my appreciation for your giving us another opportunity to represent the county of Essex in the hallways of the state of New Jersey, whether it be with the governor's office, the state legislature where you're duly represented, including with Deputy Chief of Staff Teresa Ruiz. And what I'd like to do briefly, as I did three years ago and three years before that, is give you a quick synopsis of what we've covered over the last several years. And I'd like to start off, Mr. President, with what I think is one of the most Herculean challenges the county has faced and you've managed to execute it well, hopefully with a little help from Princeton Public Affairs Group, my firm. The Essex Hudson Greenway, some people refer to it reversed, right? Hudson, Essex. I don't. What was able to be achieved this year, this calendar year, most recently, with a massive project covering multiple municipalities in two counties is a real tribute to the administration, the county executive, and this commission because you have all worked so hard to make sure that came to fruition and was in this year's budget. And particularly, Commissioner Gill, it's been an honor to work with you on that particular project. There are dozens. We have a written report, which I believe the county executive will be forwarding to you. I will ensure that that happens because sometimes there's been some communication glitches through no fault of anyone. It's just the massive operations that are involved in the largest county in the state. The other thing I think you all should take credit for and be proud of is the massive number of election bills that we've all worked on to get signed into law by Governor Murphy, passed overwhelmingly, not unanimously, but overwhelmingly by the state legislature, from mail-in ballot issues to limiting the number of police presence at the polling places, things of that nature, all in the report. Dealing with, including in this year's budget and last year's budget, another major issue you've all been involved in, and that is lead paint and lead in water, lead in the pipes. All have been a tribute to the governing body here and the county executive. And then the final point I would like to make, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but, Mr. President, as you know, I'm here to show my gratitude and appreciation. Look forward to continuing to work with you, but what this county achieved during the really horrible experience from the global pandemic, I was vaxxed twice and boosted twice thanks to the county of Passaic, so was my family, including my seven-year-old daughter.
County of Essex.
County, what did I say? Passaic, of course. I did that last time. Can't get it out of my head. What's a Patterson boy, I guess, you know? You can take the boy out of Patterson, but you can't take Patterson out of the boy. You deserve a lot of credit, Mr. President, through you to the commission, for what you've accomplished in successfully vaccinating and taking care of your citizens' health because health is wealth. Happy to answer any questions you will get. Our draft memorandum, there's been over 57 bills that we've worked on, signed into law, in addition to many of other issues we worked on in terms of supplemental appropriations, regulatory issues, and the like. And I want to also say it's been, it's been a privilege to work with the county administrator, the county finance director, the treasurer, and the county council. I want to salute Ms. Gachion for her new assignment. I know the interim, I think it's interim, county council is out on family leave and I was just with my dear friend, former Essex County mayor and former attorney, personal attorney of mine, Jerome St. John, who welcomed me into the building and I understand he may be moving on up soon. The former judge will be a great addition to your team. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pasquale. Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Gill?
Thank you, Mr. President. So first and foremost, to Mr. Pasquale, I want to thank you for taking the time, of course, to be here and to, and the representation that, at least for the, it's almost 12 years now that I've been, which is kind of, been on the board, that you've given the county and thought it was important and I feel strongly to put this on the record, you know, the resolution renewing the contract was passed unanimously at our, at our last meeting, but I want to thank the president for having a quick topic of discussion to hear from you directly as we kind of get back into the new, I shouldn't say new, as we get back into how we used to conduct our business in person, which I think is also important, you know, for us to see one another. But the representation that you have given us, I think, was validated by the unanimous support that the board gave it at our, at our last meeting. And again, thank you for taking the time. I appreciate the remarks deeply on the Essex Hudson Greenway. And in fact, Mr. President was, and Mr. Jackson was not even aware, which was great, there were some additional monies that the county is now eligible for that I know our advocates also were helpful in helping on the planning side, which was, which I was thrilled to, to hear, you know, as that, as that project moves forward. And additionally, the good news, Mr. President, is that there's also a $6 billion surplus as we head into next year's, which is publicly reported. So I know our county executive, I'm sure, Mr. Jackson, that did not go by him at all, but, you know, I just would say to my colleagues too, I think it's a great opportunity for this county to continue to deliver the services that it has been delivering and thank you for playing a role each and every day in that process. And thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Sebo?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank you for all the work you've done for Essex County for so many years and I make sure I keep up on everything that is emailed to us about what you are doing and it's really a privilege to be able to read so much of what you're doing while you're out there advocating for the people. And I'm particularly pleased that you're now a resident of Essex County. And I know, I know Patterson well and I've been to your father's office many times.
Yes, you have.
And, but I'm happy you have moved to Essex County. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Mr. President, I don't know if there's, I'd like to say one final thing. I was reminded to do this and of course I forgot. It's a tribute to the administration and to the commission. Our monthly billing, which is way under the threshold, is less than it was 28 years ago. So this is a labor of love and passion. And Commissioner Sebo, I'm celebrating in October my seventh anniversary being a resident of Essex County. So thank you.
You're very welcome. If it's that much a labor of love, you might as well do it for free.
No good deed goes unpunished.
Thanks again. We really appreciate the hard work that you do and, you know, on legislation and how you help the county move forward. So thank you very much for coming in. Okay, let's move to the public comment session. Tonight's meeting is a combined conference slash board meeting and we will vote on every item on the agenda. So if there are any members of the public who would like to comment on agenda items only, please come to the microphone, state your name and affiliation for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. There will be time later in the evening for public comment on any other item. So I ask you to please limit your comments at this time to agenda items only.
Good evening. My name is David Weiner, President of CWA Local 1081, representing the non-supervisory employees of the Division of Welfare. They keep changing our name. I rise this evening to address Agenda Resolution 12. Actually, there were two others because these three resolutions appoint three of our union members, at least two of them, to the veterans, I believe the third as well. The one that's on there, number 12, is our family service worker member, Carol Ann Malcolm Linson. So we appreciate her and your good sense and good taste in appointing her. Within the spirit of honoring our nation's veterans, especially immediately following the 4th of July, as Mr. Pasquale just said, who I remember from 25 years ago, I hereby report that on June 29th, our union took part in a Zoom meeting with members of the administration of the county. And we were talking about hiring, the county was hiring employees. They want to hire social slash family service worker trainee, which is a non-competitive title, which allows employers after one year, within that the employees to become full family service workers without taking a test. This is a civil service destroying action and it cannot be allowed to take place. Every employee of DFAB, our agency, Division of Family Systems and Benefits, every employee who's a member of our local and the Supervisors Union, my sister here, had to take a test to obtain their job here in the county. For you allow this to occur is just unconscionable. I wrote Chief of Staff Phil Olajia on the same day we had our meetings and I said to him that it is wrong to do this. One of the major things it does ironically with the 4th of July and talk about, talking about the veterans is that it will deny veterans the civil service preference. It will disappear. Right now, they go to the top of the list. If there's no civil service test, they are discriminated against. Also, as you're probably aware, in 1877 or so, during Reconstruction after the Civil War, the civil service was created and it was created to stop the kind of nepotism and favoritism that went on at that time. As we got past Reconstruction, you know, got past Reconstruction.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. We got into a situation where now the title that you're, that you were told by the Civil Service Commission President is the wrong title. It is not an open title. It's not competitive. So we ask you to take a look. It's a different name and it's a different number altogether. Finally, I want to say that we're urging the administration to avoid using this non-civil service covered title that you don't have to take a test. It'll be one of the first, if not the first time this ever happens in the county of Essex. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lisa Maddox Douglas, Public Employee Supervisor, Junior President. America has assorted history of inequality.
Oh, excuse me.
I had Agenda Number 12, the same one that David spoke on. Can you put some minutes back on since you interrupted?
Minutes?
Yes.
You mean seconds?
Well, give me two seconds. America has assorted history of inequality for African-Americans and women despite the passage of the 13th and 14th amendments and decades-long civil rights struggles for African-Americans. These discriminatory events gave rise to the civil rights movement, which prompted Congress to enact laws eliminating discrimination. Many laws related to equal pay, et cetera, provided opportunities for job advancement based on merit, ability, and potential. As a result, agencies such as the New Jersey Civil Service Commission, formerly New Jersey Department of Personnel, was established in an effort to equalize opportunities and results. Yes, humanity continues to endure some extremely perilous times as our country, as a country and worldwide. Over the past three years, we have witnessed a pandemic, gun violence, police brutality, voter rights suppression, insurrections, and most recently, the disheartening attack against women in the Roe versus Wade decision. And now we have something right here in our backyard, within our county, within DFAB, by the hands of an appointed director tasked with capturing hope and overseeing the denial of the American dream. There is a plot to wage war on the very civil service system which affords historically disenfranchised votes and opportunity to obtain fair and merit-based access to job opportunities. Let's be very clear. DFAB's short-sighted plan to introduce this trainee title into DFAB intentionally allows those in powers to hire friends, families, political allies. Also, it may adversely affect promotional opportunities for existing staff as well. It gives, it gives the appointed trainee the advantage to secure employment without submitting to the merit-based testing system after one year, as David indicated. This means that someone not possessing these connections, perhaps a qualified woman, person of color, disabled, or veteran, is prevented from obtaining a livable wage and providing for their families. This action is disgustingly reprehensible, especially since DFAB's workforce is primarily minorities, women, and others, who, by the way, service a predominantly minority population within the great cities of East Orange and New York, and North, sorry. This would set us back hundreds of years. Instead, what do we demand? We would like for DFAB to consider provisionally hiring the proposed employees pending the merit-based exam as done in the past. Also, we ask that administration identifies ways to retain existing staff as opposed to losing them to the great flight due to the agency's extremely low employee morale. Finally, esteemed commissioners, may you have, many of you have a pretty impressive labor, political, and social activism background. Please remain true to who you are. We ask that you support our union's efforts to uphold the rights many have historically and heroically fought to secure. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just have one question. This was all around item number 12 and that's just an advising consent nomination for someone to serve on a board?
The veterans board, right. And I believe that if you introduce this title, they could potentially be left or excluded out of the process.
This is to serve on a board?
I understand.
What, this has nothing to do with?
It has a lot to do with it. We're talking about protection of the rights of veterans.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President.
Commissioner Gill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, maybe a point of clarification because I just want to make sure we're, again, the last two speakers were speaking to Agenda Item Number 12 and I just want to make sure I'm working off the right agenda. Agenda Item Number 12 is an advice and consent to an advisory board, which I just want to make sure that's what we're speaking about. I'm not looking, I know, I'm not looking at the administration to answer for, I just want to make sure that the comments that were made by the past two speakers, I just want to make sure I'm understanding which agenda item these comments are addressing. It's number 12, so we're talking about an advice and consent nomination to an advisory board?
Yes, an advice and consent. We have a few employees here that we're very proud of who have an opportunity to have been appointed, but had they not been veterans, they would not have the opportunity to serve in the positions that they currently serve at DFAB.
I think there's some confusion, Mr. President. There's clearly some confusion.
That's right. So thank you very much for coming in and we appreciate it. Have a good evening and thanks for coming in.
Seems to have a cheering section, President, and commissioners. Good evening. My name is Rick Robinson.
Hold on, Rick.
I'm sorry?
Hold on one second. I want to get the door closed so we can hear you and we'll have a clear record.
Thank you, President. Again, my name is Rick Robinson. I serve at the New Jersey State Conference NAACP Chairman for Criminal Justice along with my co-chair for the NORC New Jersey branch. So I am here for Items 58 and 59. Pretty much, we don't have a problem with any of the actual actions that you have going forward with the Essex County Jail. Our only problem is that, from what I understand, the Essex County Executive honored the NORC Branch and NAACP, Irvington Branch and NAACP, Montclair Branch and NAACP, the Urban League for Essex County, along with the, I think is the Irvington Branch or something, it's another branch. But that is called the Essex Five. And with that title, they actually are asking for some respect. It has been brought to my attention and also from the state president that numerous emails have been sent in regards to the problems at Essex County Jail. We don't want to point fingers. All we're asking is for correspondence respectfully. That's all we're asking for. Again, we applaud your efforts pertaining to leading this county and that goes without saying, but when you actually engage in not respecting a civil rights organization that has been here for over 100 years, that is somewhat troubling and we find that to be somewhat displeasurable. So we look for a correspondence with the Essex County Corrections. If there is a chair, we would like to speak to the chair and conduct an in-person meeting, but as you all know, there has been a number of deaths at the Essex County Jail, which has been brought to NORC New Jersey President Smith Gregory and the state president for the New Jersey State Conference, Richard Smith. Just one thing for, for you guys to actually take in. We have the NORC Branch, we have a quarterly meeting with the state prison. So how is it not that they don't have the respect of this body in return to correspondence? So I find that it is a mishap that could be rectified and if you have any suggestions pertaining to who we should contact, I'm all ears so I can actually relay the messages. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't, don't go, sir. Who did, who was the correspondence with exactly?
Okay, so.
Who just sent it? Who was it sent to?
The correspondence was sent from all the branch presidents for Essex County along with Urban League Essex County and that correspondence was sent to, from Chief of Staff down to all commissioners. And we're actually, we know this COVID, we know these problems.
Hold on, this, this, and so no one has responded to your quest? I think I may have seen that letter. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, with all due respect, sir, I know, because I was copied on the responses from Chief Olajia, I saw two, three, two or three, maybe four requests from Mr. Olajia for dates to meet. Happy to, and that stands open, to have meetings at the jail, to have meetings wherever, to discuss the goings-on at the jail. I saw those myself. So I, I mean, if we would, we can provide those to the board, those responses.
Directed to the NAACP?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, please forward those to the clerk so we can get them and, yeah.
Mr. President, are you in charge? May I ask a question, please?
So we're not going to go back and forth, but he is, he is the BA?
Okay.
The Business Administrator?
So what I would do is I'll actually send another email to everybody tomorrow. So, what I would do is I'll actually send another email to everybody tomorrow, and everybody will be on it.
Okay.
And then I'll look forward to some type of correspondence. I have been told to actually inform this administration that if we do not get a correspondence, because we've been waiting for over almost a year, then we are going to go to the press.
Okay.
I'm very sorry about that. So, I look forward to the correspondence. Thank you, sir.
And that's your, you're right.
Again, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Let the record reflect that no one else wishing to speak at this time. So, Madam Clerk, we will now move out of order to Resolution 19, which is from the Office of Management and Budget. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Muhammad will address this item.
Good evening, Hassan Muhammad, County Treasurer. This resolution to amend the capital budget to add an item for replacement, to introduce an ordinance to replace a roof for the Essex County Correction Facility. We have to amend the capital budget because this was not included in the original budget before we introduced the ordinance.
Mr. Polavecchio?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Mackinac?
No, this is just, you know, a procedural order that has to go first before you actually authorize the expenditure with the ordinance. I just did have, the amount coming out of the capital improvement fund is what, $515,000?
Yes, the statutory 5%, $515,000.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, do I have a motion and a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Graham, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamaras absent, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move the ordinance on introduction and first reading. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for introduction and first reading?
Mr. President, we have one.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to ordinance number one, which will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Muhammad, Mr. Muhammad will address this one as well.
Good evening, Hassan Muhammad, County Treasurer. This bond ordinance providing for the replacement of the roof for the Essex County Correction Facility, and appropriating $10.3 million, authorizing $9.79 million for bonds and notes, and the rest will be from Capital Improvement Fund, $515,000.
Mr. Polavecchio?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Mackinac?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamaras absent, Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for listing purposes on...
Mr. President, we have none.
Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances, resolutions on second reading in public hearing tonight?
Yes, Mr. President. We have one, and that's Ordinance Number O-2022-00009. There's four zeros. I might have said five.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to ordinance Number O-2022-00009, and it will be read into the record at a later time. I do declare public hearing on Ordinance O-2022-00009 open. If there are any, if there's any member of the public who would like to comment for or against this ordinance, please come to the microphone, state your name and affiliation for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Let the record reflect that no one wishing to speak. Mr. Mackinac?
I have no questions, sir.
Mr. Polavecchio?
No, this was discussed pretty comprehensively at the June meeting, and gives the county some flexibility with the annual fee, so we don't have to come back for a new ordinance year after year as the state changes the fee.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, Commissioners, I need, do I have a motion on second to close the public hearing on Ordinance O-2022-0009?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Graham, second by Commissioner Mercado, to close the public hearing. Do I have the same mover and a second to approve the ordinance?
Yes.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamaras absent, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Number One, which has been withdrawn by the administration. We'll move to Resolutions 2 through 6, which are all advising consent nominations for appointments to the Homeless Trust Fund Task Force, and they will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. Our first nominee is Fatima Cole for the Homelessness Trust Fund for a term ending on 4/30/2023.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Fatima Cole, and I work for the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits as an assistant, excuse me, not assistant, Administrator Supervisor of Family Services in the EDU unit. I've been working with the county for 21 years now, in various positions. I started as a family service worker, then a supervisor, then an assistant administrator supervisor of family services. Now, I'm the administrative supervisor of family services, and I'm happy to be given the opportunity to serve the community.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions? Next, Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, our next nominee is Luis Ulreio for the same task force. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Tristan Brooks, I'm sorry, thanks, Matt, for a term ending 4/30/23, I'm sorry. Tristan Brooks.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tristan Brooks. My name is Tristan Brooks. I'm a licensed social worker, and I am going to start, I'm hoping to start in the Homeless Trust Fund Task Force. So...
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Next, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, our next nominee is Luis Ulreio.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Luis Ulreio. I am the Director of Mayor Ros Baraka's Office of Homeland Services. A little bit of myself, I was born and raised in the beautiful city of Newark, New Jersey. Father, children, beautiful network of family and friends that I appreciate so much. A little bit about my career, I've been in public service for over 15 years. I started my career at the Newark Housing Authority for five years, served in different leadership roles at the Housing Authority, then worked for local nonprofits in the city of Newark, and more recently led a statewide initiative to expand housing opportunities for people living with HIV. It was an initiative that was funded by the New Jersey Department of Health, and now in my current role as the Director, I'm leading Mayor Ros Baraka's strategy to end homelessness in our great city and lead housing initiatives and efforts as well. Thank you.
No, thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Thank you, sir. Mr. Jackson?
Next up is Adrian McCall.
My name is Adrian McCall. I work in the City of East Orange in the Planning Department as a senior management. I also wear the hat to go to the CSE meetings for the CLC, and I'm also on the Subcommittee of Homeless and Housing, so I want to have the opportunity to serve on this board.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Thank you. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, our next nominee is Terrence McCoy, who you, the board knows very well. He's unable to, he's out of town, he's unable to come, but I believe you're familiar with him and his contributions to the county.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Thank you all for being here tonight. So, we have an opportunity to meet you, so we're looking forward to working, you know, with each and every one of you on the Homeless Commission. Do I have a motion and a second to take 2 through 6 as one?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamaras absent, Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, and congratulations. Thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution Number 7, which is also an advisory consent for the Essex County Human Services Advisory Council Board, and it will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, our nominee is Gino Arivalo Barris to this commission to represent Safe Babies Core Team of Essex County. He was the famous man against the wall.
Ah. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gino Arivalo. I am the coordinator of Essex County Safe Babies Core Team, and I'm here to be sworn in to be part of the HESAC, the Human Service Advisory Board. And I heard my name, so I came in. President, so I, I know it's not the lottery, so, but I'm close to.
Now, thank you for being here. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamaras absent, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution Number 8, which is for advising consent and appointment to the Essex County Improvement Authority Advisory Board, and it will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, we're happy to nominate Anthony Nardone to this position.
Good afternoon. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. My name's Anthony Nardone. I've resided in Essex County for the past 30 years. Currently own a management company servicing properties across the entire state. Previous to that, I served the state of New Jersey as a civil engineer for the New Jersey Turnpike Authority. That sums it up in a quick, down, and dirty. I don't want it to be a long night. Neither do you.
Appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Sebel?
Thank you. I've known Anthony Nardone for many, many years, and he is a wonderful addition to the Essex County Improvement Authority, so I'm very happy you're going to be taking that position.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Sebel, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamaras absent, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you so much for serving.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution Number 9, which is also an advising consent for the Essex County Workforce Development Board, and it will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, we're happy to nominate Ally Reese to this position.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Ally Reese. I am currently the Regional Director for the CRA Group here in New Jersey for MNT Bank, and in that role, I'm responsible for ensuring that the bank is investing and giving grants to organizations in low and moderate income communities all over the state. Prior to that position, I worked for La Casa de Don Pedro here in Newark for 13 years, and worked in West Side Park prior to that, so I've been working in Newark for about, I worked in Newark for about 20 years, and I'm a 17-year resident of Essex County.
Thank you so much for wanting to serve. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Sebel, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamaras absent, Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you so much for serving. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions 10 through 16, which are all advising consent nominations for the appointments to the Essex County Veterans Advisory Board, with the exception of 11 and 16, which have been withdrawn by the administration, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, our first nominee is Kelly McGinnis.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly McGinnis. Hopefully you can hear me okay. I work for Soldier On. I'm a field supervisor there. We are a nonprofit organization that works with veterans who are experiencing homelessness and veterans at risk of becoming homeless, so I help to oversee a multimillion-dollar federal grant funded by the Department of Veteran Affairs to help veterans and housing stability. In addition to that, I am the Veterans Chair for the Essex County Continuum of Care Subcommittee, and I'm really excited about this opportunity, so I look forward to serving in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, next.
Our next nominee is Ann Malcolm Linsen, Carol Ann Malcolm Linsen, excuse me, to this very important committee.
Hello, everyone. I'm Carol Malcolm Linsen. I worked with DFAB for over 20 years, and currently specifically, I work with the Office of Child Support Enforcement. I'm a veteran with the United States Air Force, and very honored to be considered as a nominee for this advisory Veterans Board.
Could you speak a little more clearly into the microphone? It's hard to hear.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Yes. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Carol Malcolm Linsen. I worked for Division of Family Assistance and Benefit, DFAB, for over 20 years. Specifically, I worked in the Office of Child Support Enforcement. I'm a veteran with the United States Air Force. I'm very honored to be on the Veterans Advisory Board, to be a nominee. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, questions or comments? Mr. Jackson?
Thank you. Our next nominee is James Morgan Jr., Joseph James Morgan Jr.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Staff Sergeant Joseph James Morgan Jr. I've been born and raised in Belleville, New Jersey for about 30 years. I currently coach Pee Wee football there. I am a Doctor of Psychology candidate at Felician University. I am also the Medication Assisted Treatment Officer at Essex County Department of Corrections. I'm hoping to have a placement on this board so I can spearhead a program where I'll be developing a treatment plan for veterans with post-traumatic stress disorder, and that enter the field of education, and to defeat learning disabilities that come from. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Mr. Jackson?
Uh, next is Lucy DelGaudio.
Good evening. My name is Lucy DelGaudio. I am a, um, eight-year, um, veteran of the U.S. Army. I served in Operation Desert Steel, Duchess Storm. I am the Chair of the Commission for Women Veterans for the State of New Jersey. I was appointed by, um, Governor Phil Murphy. I'm also a member of, appointed to the work group of Workplace Harassment and Sexual Assault for the Department of Veterans Affairs, appointed by, um, the, um, Sec VA Dennis McDonough. I, in two thousand twenty, testified on behalf of Vanessa Guillen, um, to the Military Personals Armed Committee, um, hearing. Um, I was asked by her family to represent her and to ask for the congressional investigation of Fort Hood. Um, I am a Belleville resident. I've been a resident there for fifteen years. I work, uh, my, my day job is at Prudential Financial. I'm a manager of Culture and Engagement. I'm also a board member of Community Hope. Um, I'm also the board member of Claymore Vets, which is an organization that helps veterans, um, heal through art therapy. Um, I'm also the Chief Operating Officer of the Pink Berets, an organization out of San Antonio, Texas, that helps women who have faced military sexual trauma and assault. Um, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm very proud to serve this committee. So thank you.
Now, thank you for your service. Commissioners. Mr. Jackson.
Uh, next is Luis Felix.
I, I don't know about this one.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Luis Felix. I reside in Bloomfield, New Jersey for the past twenty-five years. Um, I'm a veteran of the Navy for six and a half years. When Clarence Johnson contacted me to, to be in this advisories board, I said, sure, this is one of the best advisories board I think there is out there. I have many hats, as you guys know, and this is going to be one of the proudest hats I am going to wear. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Siebel.
I'm very, very happy that Luis is here tonight, and I just want to tell everyone that he was honored at the, uh, July Fourth Celebration in Bloomfield. So we need to congratulate him on being so honored, and I'm so happy you're going to serve in this capacity.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes, uh, I am, uh, thrilled that, uh, that Luis Felix is going to join, uh, this advisory board. Luis is a community person. He's been invested in Bloomfield and Essex County. And I'll speak for my colleague, who is not here today, while, on his travels, but he, I'm sure, will be proud and also endorse your nomination for, for this, um, position on the advisory board. The advisory board definitely will have a slew of excellent candidates that we have been brought before us today. So thank you.
Thank you. And, and I, I too want to echo the sentiments of my two colleagues. I know you're going to do a great job, and couldn't have a better person, uh, on that board.
Thank you for those kind words. Thanks.
Mr. Jackson.
Um, I believe that, for that group, that's it, Mr. President.
Okay. I need a, I need a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
Commissioner Gill.
I just have a question before we.
Sure.
So I, I'd like to just to come back to, um, the comments that, that were raised, um, during public comment session on agenda items. And through you, Mr. President, um, I, I know this is a difficult question, and I'm not sure if the administration can, can answer it, because I'm essentially asking you to comment on someone else's position. But, um, you know, there were comments made about commitments to civil service and to our, um, uh, brothers and sisters in labor. And again, I just, uh, would like to better understand, um, what the, what the civil service and labor concern would be regarding anyone serving on a advisory, um, committee.
With your, with your permission, Mr. President?
Please.
Yeah, I, I think what happened, uh, Mr. President, was that, um, and members of the board, that, that some of these issues were like, were conflated. And, um, I think that the individuals who were wanting to talk about a topic picked something that was remotely close to, um, the issue of being a veteran. And, and one of the points that they raised was that veterans who normally get pushed to the top of the list on a civil service basis would not be a, able to do so. That was the, the contention. So therefore, they, they had a problem with what we, what we're proposing. I'll, I'll, actually, with your permission, Mr. President, I'll address some of those points. But I think that was, they were trying to link that, saying that these, these, these fine folks who are going to be, um, on this committee, some of whom are our employees, would, would have been overlooked or would have potentially not gotten to where they are had we proceeded along this path. We disagree, and I'll come back and talk about that. But I think that was the basis. They were looking for, uh, a point to grab on to, to be able to speak during that portion of the meeting. And that's why they talked about veterans versus something else. So it was, it was, um, a clever reach, I would say, to, uh, get there. But, you know.
Okay.
No harm, no foul, I guess.
Understood. Through you, Mr. President. So there's no, right, there's no civil service, uh, requirement or jurisdiction over a county advisory?
A, a, absolutely not.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. That's what I thought.
Yeah, it was confusing. But that, that was, it was simply, what can we find in the agenda that would allow us to speak to at, at this point? That, I think that's what was, and if, if you would like, Mr. President, you want me to wait till later, I can address some of those issues that were raised.
Yeah, I'd love to hear, hear some of those issues addressed, but let's get through this.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, what was it?
I nominated, I nominated it.
Mr. President.
Ten, twelve.
Through fifteen.
Through fifteen.
Together.
Um, I'm, together, I need a motion.
I moved it.
Commissioner Siebel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gill. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras, absent. Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So move.
Yeah, Mr. Jackson, um, let's get through the agenda, then we will talk about. Yeah, I'd like to hear that. So let's move to Resolutions Seventeen and Eighteen. Mr. Jackson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. We're honored to nominate, uh, Manisha Bernard to the Essex County Advisory Board for the Arts, um, as well as Miles Zhang, who will, um, come up after Ms. Bernard.
Uh, hi, my name is Manisha.
Please speak into the microphone.
My name is Manisha Bernard. I work at the Newark Museum of Art. Uh, I'm a curatorial assistant, which means like, if you go into a museum, there's an exhibition. Curators and curatorial assistants help develop that from the concept to the artworks or objects and then the organization behind it. So I do that at the Newark Museum. Um, prior to starting at the Newark Museum of Art, last year I worked, or like, I went to grad school at Zaton Hall for Museum Studies. Um, and before that, I, uh, am from Atlanta. So I've been working in museums for ten years. I'm really passionate about the arts and connecting that with communities. Um, so I'd be happy to do that for this advisory board as well.
Thank you so much. Commissioners. Next, Mr. Jackson.
Uh, yes, next is, uh, Miles Zhang.
Uh, hello, everyone. I'm Miles. I'm very honored to be here today. I'm a lifelong Newark resident. Um, I'm currently a PhD student in History and Architecture at the University of Michigan, where my dissertation will look at the history of the built environment and the built environment particularly Newark as a tool of social equity. After my, uh, volunteering at the Branch Brook Park to document the history of the park, the history of the park for an interactive map, um, the Essex County Parks Archivist put forward my nomination to serve on this committee. And I'll be honored to serve here and to represent the history of our state and, um, my own artistic interests on that board. So thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners. I need a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
Move by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions Twenty through Twenty-seven, which are budget insertions, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Uh, Mr. President, item twenty is an assertion of seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. This is simply to reflect the actual bid amount that came in, uh, above the original amount, amount of the award, and the state, uh, provided those additional funds. Uh, item twenty-two, uh, Department of Transportation. These are for two local bridges, um, two minor culverts, culverts, uh, from the Department of Public Works, the amount of one million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, this is, uh, the, uh, over Tributary of the Seig River in Livingston, uh, and the Bloomfield, and, uh, and Bloomfield Avenue, um, and also the Buford Avenue, um, culvert. So two culverts, uh, one million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Mr. Jackson, I think you leapt over twenty, uh, one.
You skipped twenty-one.
Oh, did I skip twenty-one? I don't, maybe I don't like twenty-one. I don't know.
Thank you.
You don't like that one?
I don't like that one. I apologize.
There wasn't enough money in it.
I, I probably apologize. This is an ins, budget insertion in an amount of seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and seventy cents. This is additional, uh, funding for the project. Uh, the county engineer requested, uh, funding to match the, again, to match the bid price. Uh, the total, uh, for the, uh, funding now is eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars, and there is no county match. Uh, let's see, we'll go to twenty-three. Uh, this is, uh, an insertion of items, uh, to provide for three local bridges, um, uh, three CMP culverts, uh, Sea, um, Canoe Lane over the Canoe Brook in Roseland, uh, the, uh, Annan Road over Canoe Brook in West Caldwell, and the, uh, Condit Court, Court over Fort, uh, I can't even read my own writing, Fort, Fort Lanes Brook in Roseland again, on the amount of eight hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Item twenty-four, uh, Department of Law and Public Safety, um, State of New Jersey, an amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This is to provide for, um, Juvenile Detention Alternate Initiative Innovation Funding Program. It's a youth work readiness program, a family and community engagement program, and a pro, uh, probation youth engagement program. Three, uh, major elements of that, of that funding. Uh, item twenty-five, uh, Department of Community Affairs for the Administration of Universal Service Fund, Division of Family Assistance and Benefits, the amount of thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This provides for a utility and home energy emergency assistance program. Uh, and a small amount of this grant, uh, goes to, um, offset salary and benefits for D Fab employees to perform, uh, this function, and there is no, uh, county match. Item twenty-six, and again, another budget insertion, Division of, uh, Community Health, seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, this is for the, uh, for deaf and hard of hearing, uh, communication. This is going to provide, uh, funding to allow us to put, uh, equipment into the hospital center for the, uh, the courtroom that's used there, for the J D R C classroom, and portable units, uh, for, uh, P S, P A S P, and also for D Fab to, uh, accommodate, uh, our fellow residents who have issues, uh, issue, uh, hearing, uh, challenges. Uh, item twenty-seven, uh, is a grant from, uh, the State Homeland Security Program, an amount of three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Uh, this program will allow the, um, the Sheriff's Office to build up, uh, its ability to maintain and sustain data to prevent incidents, incidents of terrorism, uh, special equipment, information intelligence gathering, uh, and targeted hardening of, uh, locations within the county, and there is no county match for this, uh, program.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Polavecchio.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing none. Do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras, absent. Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions Twenty-eight through Thirty-six, which are from the Office of the County Administrator, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Director Walker will address these items.
What a problem. Good evening, all. Tim Walker, Director of Risk Management. There you go. You can tell I never sung in a choir. Uh, we are here tonight to talk about the county's, uh, annual insurance renewal. We successfully renewed nine policies, uh, beginning with the property insurance coverage, uh, through Travelers Insurance. Total of one million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. Represented a seven percent increase over the expiring policy. The next policy with, was the general liability, auto liability, and law enforcement liability policy through BRIT slash Genesis. Uh, the total premium was one million, four thirty-three, two forty-four. That represented a ten percent increase over the expiring policy. Next is the county's excess workers' compensation coverage through Arch Insurance Company. Uh, the total premium was five hundred forty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars. That represented a forty percent increase over the expiring policy. Next was the hospital professional liability policy through Iron Shore Insurance Company. Total premium was, uh, an even two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which represented a fourteen percent increase over the expiring policy. Next is the active assailant policy through AXA XL. Uh, total premium was fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars. That was a two hundred dollar increase over the expiring policy. Four more to go. Uh, next was the public officials' policy through Chubb Insurance Company. Total premium was a hundred forty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That represented a fourteen percent increase over the expiring policy. Then it's the cyber privacy policy, uh, that is through Chubb Insurance Company. Total premium was ninety-seven thousand, twenty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. That represented a fifty-three percent increase over the expiring policy. Next was our crime policy through A I G. Uh, the total premium was four thousand, four hundred and two dollars. That actually represented a decrease of fifty-five percent from the previous year. And the final policy is the pollution liability policy through Chubb Insurance Company. Total premium was twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents, which represented a five percent increase.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Polavecchio.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Walker, I do have a question on number thirty. Most of these increases are fairly reasonable, you know, ten, fifteen percent, a couple of outliers. Uh, on the workers' compensation insurance, it's forty percent over the expiring. Is there anything in particular that led to that large, uh, increase?
Sure, it's a numerous things actually occurred. One, there was a severely reduced market out there in the insurance marketplace, where we would typically have eight to ten carriers that were willing to quote us. We only had two this year, and that was driven mainly by COVID, especially with the governor's presumption out there that put a great deal of risk on some of our employees.
Okay. Understood. And I think I could probably answer number thirty-four with the privacy liability, uh, that increase. Uh, I'm guessing it's tied to increased threat.
Exactly. With, with the number of very large cyber and ransomware claims that have been out in the industry, that represented a very severe risk to the industry.
It wouldn't be fair if I asked those questions and didn't ask how we got the fifty-five percent decrease.
We've been very good people. We haven't had a, a claim that, uh, was filed against our policy in a number- in a number of years.
That's great. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. McInerney.
I just have one question on the workers' comp. Are those rates standard rates that apply to all policies under workers' compensation?
Typically, what they do is they rate the positions, right? So since we have numerous different occupations within county employees, it is standard based on the occupation.
And then what's there? Is there an experience rate that enlarges that premium?
Our EMR really wouldn't have been affected or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Commissions, questions or comments? Hearing now. I need a mover and a second to take 28 through 36.
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras absent, Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution 37 through 40, which are from the Division of Housing and Community Development. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Lombardi will handle these items.
Good evening. Craig Lombardi, Housing Coordinator for the Division of Housing and Community Development. Item number 37, we are requesting that the board approve the division's updated policy and procedures manual for our home improvement program. This updated manual not only reflects that we are now processing applications online, but it also references our proposal to increase the maximum amount from $25,000 up to $35,000. And we also wish to accelerate the amortization of these forgivable loans. Whereas now with a straight 10-year term, we now propose that we, each year, beginning with year six, that the balance hole would be reduced by 20% each year. Item number 38, we are requesting approval to amend a program year 2020 CDBG contract with the township of Montclair. The original contract was for streetscape improvements of Glen Ridge Avenue. Since that time, the township has decided they want to add a bicycle lane to this project. So because the scope of the project has been changed, we request that we can amend the contract. The award amount of approximately $140,000 will not For item number 39, the division is requesting that the board approve the submission of our program year 2022 action plan to HUD. HUD recently notified our office that allocations for program year 2022 would be $5,241,018 for CDBG funds, $1,382,194 for home funds, and $469,298 for the ESG program. The action plan under consideration includes our proposed CDBG home and ESG grant awards to various subrecipients. It is noted that this plan was released via public notice, and we also did have a public hearing, and to date, we have not received any comments from the public. Finally, item number 40, the division is requesting approval of reprogramming CDBG funds totaling $2,750,000 to various subrecipients that were described in the matrix that was attached to this resolution. These funds represent CDBG funds from prior years that have been recaptured from inactive projects or projects that did not expend the full amounts of their original grant awards. It is expected that the proposed subrecipients will complete their projects in a timely manner, which will improve our timeliness as far as what we report to HUD for the spending of these funds. And as with the annual plan, these reprogrammed funds were also released through a public notice, and also, there was a public hearing, and no comments have been received to date regarding our proposals.
Thank you. Mr. Palavecchio.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney.
On number 40, is the expiration date the same of the grants?
Yes, sir. We do need to spend the money. We're okay now. Oh, yeah, it would be, you know, the older money, those deadlines would be approached quicker than some more recent funds. But we are, well, we're within the deadlines right now.
So they all have to be expended within a certain date?
Yes.
And on number 37, is that forgivable loans that are amortized?
The home improvement loans?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the way the system is set up now, so homeowner, an income-eligible homeowner would receive a loan, and then if they do not sell or transfer title of the property within 10 years, the loan would be forgiven after the end of 10 years. What we've been finding is that has been sort of a financial burden for some folks. So by accelerating the amortization of this, for example, after year six, if they received a $20,000 loan, they would owe $4,000 less after year six, and then another $4,000 after year seven. So this way, if, for example, a lot of our homeowners are senior citizens, and sadly, if they pass away, we don't want to burden the families with these funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gill.
Thanks, President. On number 40, are those, so those are, there's going to be new, those are going to be new projects, or we're just extending on existing?
No, they are new projects because these other projects did not deliver, or they did not spend as much as they had. So this is money going to new projects, old money going to new projects, and these projects were selected in part based on the fact that they would be completed in a timely manner. You know, we did, we did, we put out an RFP, we took in applications, et cetera.
Okay. And I may admit, but that list is included in the backup documentation, the new projects?
Yes.
That we're funding? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissions, questions, any other questions or comments? Hearing now. Need a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to take 37 through 40 as one.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras absent, Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution 41, which is from Division of Family Assistance and Benefits, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Coltrane.
Mr. President, Julius Coltrane, Deputy County Administrator. This is a one-month extension to Hudson Community Enterprises Shelter Workshop. The need for the one-month extension is the new vendor will come onboard September 1st, and we need this old contract to be extended for one month.
Thank you. Mr. Palavecchio.
Mr. Coltrane, the extension is at the current rate, the current contract rate?
Through, Mr. President? Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now. Need a mover and a second.
Move it.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras absent, Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution 42, which is from the Division of Youth Services, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Martinez.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jason Martinez. I'm the Director for Essex County Youth Services Commission. Today, we're asking, we're requesting approval for one contract for the amount of $61,200 for United Community Corporation under their juvenile detention alternative program, which provides services for court-ordered youth and their families.
Thank you. Mr. Palavecchio.
No questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now. Need a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras absent, Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution 43, which is from the Division of the Hospital Center, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Mr. DelGaudio, Director DelGaudio will handle this item.
I always have this problem with shortness. Frank DelGaudio, Director, Department of Health and Rehabilitation. Resolution 43 is a request for a contract with Myers &amp; Stoffer. They're the accounting firm that does all of the bookkeeping, record-keeping, billing, invoicing for our hospital fee pilot program. This was, an RFP was distributed, and they were the only firm to respond to the RFP.
Thank you. Mr. Palavecchio.
No questions.
Mr. McInerney.
Mr. President, this is the firm that's been involved with this program from the beginning of the program. The one question I do have is, does this fee come out of our 9% of the fee?
Through you, Mr. President. The way this, this is funded from the hospital's budget, but is not a billable expense back for state aid. So it comes out of our overall budget from the hospital center. It's not, we can't take the money and then subsidize from the proceeds of the fee pilot program. So it's a budgeted amount annually.
But it wouldn't be there if we weren't getting the fee in the first place.
Correct.
And that's one of them. About how much is that?
It's about $7.2 million. That's what came in for 2021, 2022. Now, second year started July 1st.
No questions or comments? Now, I need a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras absent, Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution 44, which is from the Board of Taxation, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Mr. Coltrane.
Mr. President, this is a RFP that went out. We had one respondent, had 27 potential for reevaluation advisory service not to exceed $25,000. This is a vendor that has been doing work with the Board of Taxation, advising them on tax appeals, et cetera.
Thank you. Mr. Palavecchio.
No questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Okay. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now. Need a mover and a second.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham.
Sound like a dancer.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras absent, Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson. So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution 45 through 50, which are from the Department of Parks and Recreation. We should put them on last.
Still wait for that picture.
At the very end. Mr. Zaitz.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. My wife would probably like me coming home much later. Did she pay you to say that? Number 45 is a resolution to support, a final application with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program for diversion application over at the South Mountain Reservation. This is on request from Orange Township, this resolution. If the board remembers, back in, I believe, August or September, there was a pre-application that the board had to vote on for a resolution. Now, this is the final application. We do have Jamie Miro here, just to briefly refresh the board's memory about the project.
Good evening. So the City of Orange requests the county's support.
Excuse me, please.
Can you hear me now?
State your first name, your last name, your affiliation for the record.
Jamie Miro. I'm an environmental scientist with Mount McDonald, representing the City of Orange. So the City of Orange requests the county's support for the final approval as applicant of a Green Acres minor diversion permit for the Glen Avenue South Mountain Reservation water transmission main relocation. The pre-application for the Green Acres permit was previously supported by the county, which has since been approved by the NJDEP Green Acres Program. Compensation for project activity impacts will include a monetary compensation for land and tree disturbance in the total amount of $302,547.05. Compensation will be provided by the City of Orange to Essex County.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Number 46 is a contract award to Direct Waste Services for the transportation of waste, garbage, various locations. This is the 24-month option not to exceed $489,304. This is for various trash pickup throughout the entire Essex County park system. Again, it's an extension. Number 47, professional service agreement to provide entertainment over at the South Mountain Recreation Complex, Lisa Lou, amount not to exceed $65,000. These are for the various entertainment programs that we run over at the zoo, specifically Halloween, the Open House, holiday lights, as well as senior wellness. Number 48 is authorization to use the Essex County Recreation Open Space Trust Fund to fund engineering, construction, administrative services for ballfields over Brookdale Park, amount not to exceed $157,450. If the board can remember back to the May 25th Commissioners' meeting, Frenchen Perillo was awarded this contract. We originally used capital dollars to move forward with the project, just because the open space board was not able to meet in time for the May 25th meeting. Since then, the open space board has met, and now we are requesting to fund this through open space, and then the dollars that we originally used would go back into capital. Number 50, authorization to use the Open Space Trust Fund for engineering design services for the Island Giants exhibit over at the Turtleback Zoo, amount not to exceed $376,000. This is the funding source for number, I'm sorry, what, I missed 49?
49.
Sorry about that.
You trying to get home early?
Let's go back to 49 is recreation, authorization to use Recreation Open Space Trust Fund, amount not to exceed $2.5 million for the Francis Byrne Golf Course. This is one of the partial funding sources for number 52, that will be discussed a little later. And then number 50 is the authorization of $376,000 for the Island Giant exhibit, the design work, and that is the funding source for number 51, which will be discussed later. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Mr. Palavecchio.
I do have a question for Mr. Zaitz on number, he's getting a, Mr. Zaitz, on 48, where we're now using open space funds for the ballfields at Brookdale Park. Does that fund the entire project, or does that supplement the previous funding source?
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Through you, Mr. President. That is the entire amount for Frenchen Perillo's contract to design it. And if I may, if I could just go back to number 48, I just want to put on record, I'm sorry, number, what number is it, 40, number 50, I just want to put on record that when the Island Giants exhibit comes to fruition, it is going to be within the boundaries of the zoo, in case there's any concern about that.
Mr. McInerney.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Siebel.
Items number 48, 49, and 50 were discussed at the June 6th Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board, and we went through each one at length, and everyone was in agreement to spend the money to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Mr. President. On agenda item number 50, I know we received some correspondence. On, on agenda item number fifty, I know we received some correspondence today from Coalition to Save, South Mountain Reservation. I don't know if that same correspondence was sent to the administration. If it was, and you did have a chance to review it, if you cared to address those issues that were raised in the correspondence that were, that were sent to the Board.
Yeah, I did see an email. I'm not sure it was from the same group, but I think the, the real, the issue was with the one that Josh just put on the record, that it's within the footprint of the zoo. It's not expanding the zoo in any way, shape, or form. I think that was the salient issue in that email, but there may have been other issues, I don't recall.
Thank you, Mr. Josh. I guess, through you, Mr. President. One which I think is, which, which I think is inaccurate, and I think Commissioner Siebel did on it. There, there's a public comment during, for, during our open space advisory committee meetings, correct?
Yes.
Okay. One of the issues was, it was claimed that there was no opportunity for public comment during the last.
They can, they can email.
Open space advisory committee meeting.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks, through you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, the, the open space meetings are currently virtual. We do, we do list on the county's website when those meetings are taking place. At the time of the listing, we list what agenda items we expect to go over. We always leave it open that we could add additional agenda items when, prior to the meeting. We do also advise the public that they're welcome to email me personally if they have any questions about any of the agenda items, or any comments for that matter. We then, if we receive those emails and comments, we then read it to the Open Space Advisory Board. The Open Space Advisory Board provides input, and then we do respond to the, the person who asked the question.
Okay. And then I guess what you've addressed was the, the boundaries of the potential exhibit. But one of the issues that was raised in the correspondence was, was whether or not we have a delineation of the actual footprint of, I guess, the zoo itself. You know, kind of the idea of, do we have a commitment, or is it more of a fluid issue as to what the boundaries of the entire facility actually are? And, and again, Mr. President, can you answer these now, or I'm sure we'll pull them through you out of court to the, you know, the appropriate response, but if you wanted to speak to that at all, I just wanted to highlight that, you know, we did receive that correspondence today.
Joshua Zaitz, through you, Mr. President. I would, I would have to get back to the administration, I'm not versed right in.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Here and now, I need a mover in a second.
I'll move it. I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras absent, Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes, to take forty-five through fifty as one.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution fifty-one through fifty-seven, which are from the Department of Public Works, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ortiz will handle these items.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andres Gomez Ortiz, Department of Public Works. Item number fifty-one, it's a professional service agreement. It's a professional service agreement to provide design engineering services for Island Giants exhibit at Turtleback Zoo to French and Perillo Associates for an amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy-six thousand. We have a representative from FPA to speak about their company, the project, and to answer any questions.
Mike Pega.
Hello. Mike Pega from French and Perillo Associates. We've been a firm for about forty-five years. We've done work with Essex County over the last twenty years, varying from park work to the Turtleback Zoo. We've worked at the Turtleback Zoo on multiple exhibits, and we really enjoy working up there. In particular, this one from the RFP, they're going to be looking to do a design on the inside of the park. There's an existing structure there. We're basically taking down that structure and rebuilding two new little structures. That would, would basically be holding the Komodo Dragons and the American Alligator. We would be working with the zoo closely to make sure that we're meeting all the requirements for AZA, and to make sure that the staff is meeting their criteria. So if there's any questions.
Next.
Can I just?
Commissioner Siebel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want to add that French and, French and Perillo Associates has done much work for Essex County, and they really have done fantastic work, and the work at Turtleback Zoo has been excellent. So thank you, Mike, for all the work you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Next. Thank you.
Item number fifty-two is a contract to award Turco Golf, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, to provide Francis Byrne Golf Course improvements in West Orange, New Jersey. This is a two-hundred-and-seventy-day contract for an amount not to exceed six million eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars. Number fifty-three is a contract to award Corral Bell Demolition, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, to provide demolition services for the Cherry Blossom Walkin Center.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait. Is, is the vendor here for fifty-two?
The vendor for Dennis Turco is now present at the moment. He came in a little later, so he's actually here. We have a representative, a representative from Turco Golf, Mr. Dennis Turco.
Yeah, we, we're going to hold that up if you weren't here.
Oh, thank you.
You come on up.
He's been here the whole day.
Yeah, you have. We came up on the elevator together. Please introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about what you're going to do.
Hi, my name is Dennis Turco, I'm the owner of Turco Golf. I've been working with Essex County for around fifteen years. I did multiple contracts on their golf courses. We just did a very successful project at Hendrix Field. That was a six-million-dollar project that we finished this spring. And if you have any questions about the project.
Not so much about the project, but you've been working at the county for, you say, fifteen years?
About fifteen years, yeah.
Any Essex County residents in your employ?
No.
Do you, are you a union shop, do you work with any unions?
Excuse me?
You work with the unions at all?
We, Hendrix Field, that was a PLA, we worked with the unions, yes.
And so.
Well, we do hire local people.
Pardon me?
We do hire locals.
And so on, on this contract, will this be a PLA, this will be a PLA?
No.
It will not?
It's not a PLA.
And so, how many, so how are you going to employ Essex County residents?
Well, we put an ad in the paper.
You put an ad in the paper? And you've been working with Essex County for fifteen years, and you have no Essex County residents in your employ?
No. We travel.
That's not, that's not a good look.
No. What we do is we put, once we go, we're doing a job in Albany right now. When you're in the golf business, you travel. So when we go, not, we, fifteen, not, six, we did three projects, four, four, four projects over fifteen years. So when you're in the golf industry, you travel all over the country. So we're doing a job in Albany right now, and we put an ad in local papers, and we hire local people.
So.
We'll be doing the same thing with this project.
So in Hendrix Field, it was a six-million-dollar project?
Yes, sir.
And it was a PLA?
It was a PLA.
And this is a six-million-dollar project, and it's not a PLA? Can the administration explain that to me?
I'll have to get back to you, Mr. President.
All right, so we'll get back to this. Yeah, we're going to table this until the next meeting, which is what date?
So we'll take a motion to adjourn.
We need a, a motion to adjourn this.
Item fifty-two.
Until, item fifty-two until August third?
Yes.
You have a motion to adjourn?
The motion made by Mercado, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gill. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras absent, Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes, to adjourn to August third.
Third.
August third, next.
Andres Gomez, Department of Public Works. Item number fifty-three is a contract to award Carabella Demolition, the lowest responsible and responsible bidder, to provide demolition services for the Cherry Blossom Walkin Center. This is a thirty-day contract for an amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. We have a representative from Carabella Demolition to speak about their company, their project, and answer any questions. Joe Bolardino.
Good evening, Commissioners. Carabella, or Carabella Demolition started in nineteen twenty-eight. I have multiple Essex County residents that work for our company, and they've worked with us for fifteen or twenty years.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Next.
Andres Gomez, Department of Public Works. Item number fifty-four is a professional service agreement to provide construction engineering services for twenty-twenty-two roadway resurfacing program, KS Engineers PC, for an amount not to exceed two hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. We have a representative from KAC to speak about their company, the project, and to answer any questions. Kamal Shaheed and Girish Takkar.
Please, Kamal, introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about the project.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kamal Shaheed. I'm president and owner of KS Engineers. The company started in nineteen ninety-one. We moved our headquarters to Essex County in nineteen ninety-four, and since then, we have been in Essex County. We just renewed our lease for another twelve years, so hopefully I'll retire from Essex County at the end of the twelve years. The company employs about two hundred and fifty people. Of that, close to hundred and fifty people work right here in, in our headquarters, in Newark. And we actively hire people from Essex County. About sixty-five percent of our staff are minority and women. Not sixty-five percent from Essex County, I hope we, we had, but a lot of them are from Essex County. They live in Newark and Essex County. We have been working for the county for, let's say, past ten, more than ten years. We have been working on other, other projects, and we're very happy to have won again the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two resurfacing project. With me, I have Girish Takkar, he's our project manager. If any, if you have any questions, be able to.
No, just want to thank you for employing our Essex County residents.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, any questions? Next.
Andres Gomez, Department of Public Works. Item number fifty-five is a contract to award to Smith-Sunday Asphalt Construction Company, the sole responsive and responsible bidder for the twenty-twenty-two roadway resurfacing program, for an amount not to exceed eight million two hundred and sixty-eight thousand forty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. We have a representative from Smith-Sunday to speak about their company, the project, and to answer any questions. Mr. Joe Smith.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Joseph Smith. I'm the president of Smith-Sunday Asphalt Construction. It's a company that's celebrating its seventy-sixth year in business. We've been very blessed to work in Essex County, probably eighteen of the last twenty-five years. We have about twenty-five percent of our staff, which is about twenty-five people represented from Essex County. Our total involvement with minorities is about thirty-five to forty percent of my workforce. I personally run the company, especially Essex County. It's perhaps, probably, one of the best counties that I've had the opportunity to work in, because they demand quality, they understand quality, they demand service, and most of all, they pay promptly. It's very fortunate, it's very fortunate when you're able to work in a place like this that understands, and we work very diligently to perform that way, and it's, it's understanding. I'm very blessed to have that.
You a union shop, sir?
Yes, sir. Union shop, we hire four-seventy-two, eight-twenty-five, and Teamsters five-sixty.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Next.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andres Gomez, Department of Public Works. Item fifty-six is a contract to award Colinelli Brothers, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, to provide miscellaneous drainage improvements at various county locations. This is a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day contract for an amount not to exceed seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, two hundred and two dollars. We have a representative from Colinelli to speak about their company, the project, and to answer any questions you may have. Matt Gordner.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening. Matt Gordner, with Colinelli Brothers, Inc., I'm a project manager. Colinelli Brothers has been in business for thirty-six years. We are located up in Hackensack, but we have quite a bit of experience working in Essex County. We currently employ local four-seventy-two and eight-twenty-five, and about a third of our workforce is residents of Essex County, myself included.
Thank you so much. Next.
Andres Gomez, Department of Public Works. Item number fifty-seven is a contract to award Sparwick Contracting, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, for miscellaneous improvements to various bridges and culverts. This is a two-year contract for an amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty-six, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy cents. We have a representative from Sparwick to speak about their company, the project, and to answer any questions. Mr. Brian Fagerston.
Good evening, Brian Fagerston, Sparwick Contracting President. Sparwick Contracting is a contractor specializing in bridge maintenance, repair, and replacement. We're based out of Lafayette, New Jersey. We're a hundred percent union, four-seventy-two, eight-twenty-five, fifteen, sixty. We've been in business for thirty years. We've been doing business with Essex County for the last twenty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next. I think that's it.
That is, oh, Commissioners.
Mr. Polavecchio.
No additional questions.
Mr. McInerney.
On item number fifty-two, I know it was pulled, but there's two million five hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars of grant funds being used to fund those improvements, and it's out of the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one. So that, those funds, were, were able to use those for capital improvements?
I would have to get back to you on that question. I know this project itself is grant-funded, capital-funded, and trust-funded, so that sits.
I'll speak it to the grant.
So to the grant, I'll have to get back to you on that question.
All right. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. McInerney?
That's it.
Oh, you got, okay.
That one question, that's it.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Here and now, I need a mover in a second.
I'll move it.
To take fifty-one, fifty-two has been adjourned, and fifty-three through fifty-seven.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras absent, Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions fifty-eight and fifty-nine, which are from the Department of Corrections, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Director Ortiz will handle these items, Mr. President.
Good evening, Commissioners. Alfaro Ortiz, Director, Essex County Correctional Facility. Item number fifty-eight, contract award to Atlantic Tactical Incorporated. to purchase Winchester brand 9mm Ruger ammunition under state contract in the amount not to exceed $39,474. This is for range qualifications and weapon ammo replacement. And item number 59 is contract change order with DCO Energy for total building maintenance at Essex County Correctional Facility, adding amount not to exceed $1,598,723.90. A quick breakdown of those maintenance repairs include replacement of multiple HVAC coils and heating pumps. Because of the COVID pandemic, aggressive strategy of increasing airflow and ventilation within the building, as a result, such strategies create stress on the HVAC system requiring additional repairs. Rainfall events, multiple flash flood events have necessitated the need for water pumps, water storage, ground repair, and sewer maintenance. The facility sewer lift station failed to, as a result of age, needed replacement. Security enhancements, as a result, as a response to multiple security events, cell flashing, cuff port enhancements, food ports, appliance outlets, charging, and tablet apparatus. We've implemented tablet systems, so we had to have the appropriate receptacles. Power backup, as a result of upgrades to our video conferencing capabilities, because the COVID attorneys were not coming in, so we had to provide the courts and/or the attorneys the ability to communicate with their clients and/or the courts, and required some power backups to facilitate that. COVID-19 pandemic modifications in the kitchen, visitation areas, lobby, ODR, and gymnasium, task force, and Ambrose Group recommendation implementations of relocation of cameras, addition of cameras, metal detections, equipment lockers, and medical equipment. And finally, roof repairs. Increased material costs and shipping costs were necessary in order to maintain the integrity of this flat roof system that's 20 years old at the facility. With me for regarding item number 59, I have Representative Mr. David Delvecchio. He can answer any question. I'll be happy to answer any question I can.
Mr. Polavecchio.
I have Mr. Delve... Do you want to hear from the vendor?
Yeah, let's get on...
Mr. President, thank you. And I'm with DCO Energy, and we have been at the jail since the jail was built. Matter of fact, we were the one thing that was built on time and under budget. We were waiting for the jail to get finished, and we were up and running and providing temporary power to the construction operation there, if you remember that correctly. We have, we employ Essex County residents, and we have contracts with local 68, and our employees are all union members. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has on any items that were discussed.
Mr. Polavecchio.
No questions.
Mr. McInerney.
There's usually, isn't there a piece of this contract that, I don't know how much it is, but it was inserted in the contract to pick up parts and different acquisitions of materials that could be used? Is that still in the contract? Was, I think it was $150,000 at one point in time?
Yeah, I will, I'll double check and... Mr. President, through you, I'd be happy to get back to you.
And the question to that would be, had that been all used up? If it exists?
If it exists, I'm sure.
Because a lot of years it hadn't been.
Correct.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Commissioner Sebel.
Thank you. David Delvecchio's been working for the county for so many years, and he has done such a wonderful job with his company. So I have no questions and no complaints, only compliments.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Very kind.
I need a mover in a second.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Commissioner, moved by Commissioner Sebel, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarés, absent. Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Let's move to, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 60 through 62, which are from the Office of Purchasing, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Coltrier.
Mr. President, Julius Coltrier, Deputy County Administrator, Purchasing Agent. Number one was a bid for medical supplies, which included x-ray material, wheelchairs, et cetera. We are recommending two vendors, JML Medical, Inc. of Lakewood, New Jersey, and a new vendor, Family Medical of Jersey City, which is a woman-owned business, and the owner is in Livingston, New Jersey. The amount not to exceed is $200,000. Previous expense was $58,989.73. Number 61 is to furnish your delivery of criminal investigation equipment, and it is to searchy acquisition. A lot of this equipment is for investigations for the prosecutor's office, specialized gloves, et cetera. Not to exceed $50,000. Previous amount was $19,744.60. Number 62 is one bid received at a 14 potential to Hodges. This particular bid is to supplement the Parks Department's bid for tents, chairs, et cetera. This past year with the pandemic, we have used a lot of tents and chairs, et cetera, to be rented. So now, this way, at least, other departments such as Elections or the county commissioners can use a separate bid on its own. It's not to exceed $250,000, and we received one bid. Open end as needed.
Mr. Polavecchio.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments for 60 through 62? Here now, I need a mover in a second.
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarés, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution 63, which is from the Office of the Prosecutor, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Coltrier.
Mr. President. We went out in November for an RFQ request for qualifications for transcription services. In Lee Transcription was one of the vendors that were certified at that particular time, and the prosecutor needs transcription services not to exceed $50,000 between now and the end of the year, and next, or next year, RFQ will be county-wide, so any, any agency in the county can use it for transcription services. This will not to exceed $50,000 for the prosecutor between now and the end of the year.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio.
No questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Here now, I need a mover in a second.
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarés, absent. Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution 64, which is from the Board of County Commissioners, and will be read into the record at a later time. Madam Clerk, please explain.
Mr. President, this award is to Cisnet Solutions, and that's to provide website consulting services. It's a 24-month contract, amount not to exceed $93,400, and this vendor will upgrade our website and keep it current as requested by the staff and the commissioners.
Mr. Polavecchio.
No questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, here now, I need a mover in a second.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarés, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
Bless you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move to Resolutions 65 through 83, which are all commendations and memoriam and proclamation resolutions, and they will be read into the record at a later time. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Here now. Do I have a mover in a second?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Sebel, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarés, absent. Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any added starters, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Report of Board Committees. Commissioners, do we have any reports of board committees? Any legislative reports? Any written communications? Do we have any unfinished business? Commissioners, do we have any new business? Okay, Madam Clerk. Let's move to public comment session. If there is any member of the public who would like to comment on any matter, please come to the microphone, state your name, address, and affiliation for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Pamela McGelvin. I'm the founder of the Palm Tree Block Association, and I also advocate for Velsberg Park and just recently registered the park for the Velsberg Park Community Conservancy. I did have the opportunity to have a discussion, a conversation with Joe D. last month.
Please speak into the microphone.
I did have the opportunity to have a conversation with Joe D. at the park on the 16th. He assured me of what's going to be coming there to the park. The bathroom in the play area that I have been crying for, for the last couple of years, he said that will be redone. And he would try to save some of the bricks because at one time, it was a thing about the bricks being historical, which all the parks have some type of history in it. So he assured me of several things that's coming to the park. He apologized for not acknowledging me at the groundbreaking, which I'm okay with that, you know? But like I told him, I hold you to your word. I also want to say that playground area is some things that's... Some of the equipment is broken. The surface is, some of the surface is not, is torn up. So I'm hoping that that can be repaired because now that, you know, some of his hair is out, kids is still coming to the park. Joe also tried, said that he would try to do something about the traffic measures in the area because that's a big, big issue because once the park is done, it going to require, it's going to be state of the art. And I can't wait. But it's going to be so much traffic, and so much going on, and we definitely need some type of traffic measures there. So he said he will look into that also. Question, when, when, who, is the Sheriff Department or the county is responsible of forcing the permits that are given out to... Like, we have vendors that come by the park, even though Orient Parkway is considered city, but he's still on the county, on the park also. They sell stuff and they leave garbage. I saw the sheriff did one of the county's...
30 seconds.
...day, and I asked him, is it possible you can speak to them, let them know? He just said he see what he can do. But he didn't, he wasn't sure. So who forces the permit to make sure that that person has the permit or a pitless license or whatever? Because they leave the garbage there on the side of the park, which I think that's just not fair. Thank you.
No, thank you for coming in, and as is our practice, any questions that you ask will be, we'll get back to you in writing.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that the proper people respond.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. So no one else wishing to speak at this time? Let the record reflect that. Commissioner, comment session. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. President.
But before you, let me just make the statement. Mr. Jackson? Right after this comment session, then I'd like to hear some of those responses. Go ahead, Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll be brief. Unfortunately, as we all know, we again had horrific acts of gun violence, both here in our county and across this nation over the last 10 days. We're now up to 11 mass shootings a week. I'm sorry, a month, excuse me, in this country. And congratulations to Senator Ruiz, Governor Cody, Assemblyman McKean, Governor Murphy, and those who signed a gun safety prevention called 3.0 Act in New Jersey. So New Jersey is at least trying to fill the void where the federal government is failing us. But I wanted to just put on the record, Mr. President, and I'll send this through the clerk for any member of the board who would like to join me. There is a lot of work being done across the country in how we can use our public dollars that are spent, our public tax dollars that are spent, to force gun manufacturers to do more on the issue of safety, to do more on the issue of helping to curb gun violence. So I know here in the county, we spend a significant amount of money, you know, through our Sheriff's Department and Prosecutor's Office on the purchase of weapons. We, I think, should seek to potentially be a leader on that front and start to look at more aggressive ways that we can not just have them respond to the six questions in the legislation that we passed a few years back now, which essentially just asks them to be good corporate citizens and make sure. But we need to go even a step further. We need them, we need to utilize and leverage the money that we're spending in this county with these manufacturers to get more done on the issue of safety. If we can't get it done legislatively at the federal level, if our federal government's going to continue to fail us on this issue, then we're going to have to do more on the local level. So I will follow up with you, Mr. President. I just wanted to put that on the record tonight. Obviously, welcome, you know, you and, of course, anyone else who wants to kind of spend a little bit of time on working, on putting that together, and we'll be reaching out to the administration, obviously, in a collaborative way to see if there's more that we can do at the local level on this issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Please, and thank you for that, Commissioner Gill. Please add my name to...
Absolutely.
Wanted to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You have my full support. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just lead off by saying that I certainly, an administration certainly appreciates the enthusiasm and the passion that Mr. Weiner and Ms. Maddox Douglas bring to their responsibilities representing their members. But we do have, I think, a little bit, I won't call it much ado about nothing, but I know how passionately they feel about it, but I think we're, in many cases, really on the same page. the same page. And also too, just want to say that Director Richardson-Green has really just an incredible task of managing all of that, and she's doing, I believe, a great job with the limited resources that she has available to her at the moment, and we're trying to work on making more resources available. So with that said, I think there's a lot of agreement actually between the parties. First of all, that the workload down at DFAB is overwhelming and that the clients are being not as well-served as we would like, and the staff is being pushed to its limits, which is not to say that everybody down there isn't doing, working hard and doing a good job, but there is a shortage of staffing. So we, we are agreeing with that. In fact, the union recently filed a grievance about the lines outside of the building. So I think, given that position, I think we're all in agreement that we need to do something to make sure that we're doing, that we can do even more to serve the clients that come to, that are looking for help. And of course, during this time, it's even more important that we do even more. The second thing that we, we're all in agreement on is that there is no civil service list. There's nobody that can be hired because there isn't a civil service list available for family service workers. And civil service doesn't anticipate having one for six, maybe as much as a year from now. So our choice is to do nothing or wait for civil service to promulgate another list, which in the meantime will have our, the most needy, again, not being as well-served as they could be despite the best efforts of the team down at DFAB. One other thing, a couple of other things. One is that the Civil Service Commission, what we are planning to doing, hiring these family service worker trainees who will work for a year, and after that one-year period, if they perform well, they can become permanent family service workers. They would not be, if they wanted to get promoted to family service supervisors or something like that, they would have to take tests. So all this does is make them, after a year, become members of the, become permanent members, but after that, they would be subject to all the testing and everything else to get promoted. And I should, with that too, I should add that the Director Green and the Chief of Staff met with, had a conversation with the Director of Civil Service, and Civil Service told us that was appreciative of the problem, not only S County, but all the counties are having with getting people served. So they recommend, the Civil Service itself recommended that we hire people as family service worker trainees to help address the workload in the short term because the Civil Service recognized that it's not going to have a list in an acceptable time period. So we're acting on the recommendation and the advice of the Civil Service Commission itself. So when comments are made like this is destroying civil service, I think it's ironic that, to make that point, when in fact, the course of action that we're following is based on recommendations that we in fact got from civil service. The civil service title, one of the things that we've heard too is that the civil service, the client service rep would be the position that we should look at to fill these positions instead of this family service worker trainee position. And we believe, and if you read your job description, that this position is not eligible to do family service work. One reason is because the job itself says that you, that this position, the client service reps are actually responsible for making sure that the family service workers are, that they hear the complaints or concerns raised by clients of the work done by family service workers. So if they're going to be, if they're going to be, they can't be a family service worker and do, and observe or oversee or at least be an advocate for the clients if they're in fact doing the work. So that, we think that that doesn't work. And we also, the other interesting thing about that position is that back in July, I believe it was of 2021, the union filed a grievance saying that the client service rep title should not be used for family service worker efforts. So again, the recommendation was, well, you should use client service reps, and it's just again, at the same time, a year, a year or so ago, filed a grievance saying that the, that was not an appropriate, that they should not be doing family service worker tasks. The other issue that came up, and it was recent, that was connected, that you raised, Mr. President, and also Commissioner Gill, about item 12 with respect to veterans. We have, in the process that we would use for the family service worker trainee position, we have no problem at all pushing veterans up to the top of the list. So that's one of the things that we can do, that we can provide veterans to be the first people interviewed and talked to about these positions. So veterans would in no way be hurt as a result of this, of this process, and we would, just like we would do for civil service, we would be more than happy to move veterans up to get priority. Lastly, we would also support if the Civil Service Commission said that at the end of the one-year period that these family service worker trainees had to take a test, we have no objection to that at all. The issue is, that's not how it's done. Civil Service says that once they take, they've done the year, they've done their training period, as it were, that they become automatically, become permanent, and it doesn't require a test. So we're not making that up. We're not trying to be, to do something different. This is the way that process works. So if, for example, civil service were to say, okay, well, we're going to change it so that the folks that you've hired as these trainees have to take a test at the year, at the end of the year, no problem. We wouldn't have any objection to that. So one of the things that was raised about was that, you know, the testing, and we don't have any objection to that at all. So I think in summary, Mr. President, members of the board, I'm a little bit still confused about the objection. This is not going to replace the civil service process. When the list is promulgated, we will immediately go and look at those candidates. We are, we have been pushing civil service for a list. It just hasn't, they're inundated just like everybody else these days, and they're not going to be able to get a list out again for six or 12 months, and we have to do something to make sure that our least fortunate members of our community have some additional resources sent their way. Again, not to disparage anything that anybody on the team is doing, and certainly not of the leadership of Director Green, who I think is making, you know, things work with very limited resources, and is somehow getting it done, to her credit. But, but again, it's still not, she still needs help. Our other members of our team down there need help, and this is a way of providing it in the short term until the list is promulgated, and we don't think that it hurts the, our existing employees at all, and we think that if anything, it's going to provide them with some relief and enable us to, again, I think the most important thing for all of us is to make sure that our constituents are better served.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Paul Vecchio.
No.
Mr. McInerney.
No.
I have, oh, Commissioner Mercado.
President, I have a comment. We visited along with some of my commissioner colleagues and toured DFAB, and Director Richardson gave us a really in-depth tour and showed us the facility, showed us the work that was going on, had expressed concerns about the need, you know, to bring, to hire more folks to take care of the backlog. So I think that the administration, whatever efforts we can assist in moving this forward, it's to their advantage and most importantly, to the clients that they serve. So I definitely support this request, and I think we all should continue to support the Director Green. They have a herculean task over there, and there are a lot of folks that are just, you know, not, not in the same, you know, don't think about that, about that division as others do, and I think that the Director is doing a great job over there considering the circumstances, and she needs help hiring some folks to, you know, to take care of that backlog. Thank you.
So my question is, so these, these workers that will be working for a year, would they be in the union? Or they would be at-will employees for a whole year and subject to not being represented by the union?
That they would be in the union, just like.
So they would be in the union after, what, 30 days, 60 days?
Yeah, the tip, I'm not sure the actual timeframe, Mr. President, but the tip, whatever that normal process is, that they would become members of the union.
So if it's the same as if there's someone who has taken the test, comes in, right, and goes directly into the union, whatever that timeframe is, these folks will be hired and be put into the union at that same timeframe?
Correct. That's correct, Mr. President. And I guess the other thing too is that if we were to do it off the list, that's only about, I think it's a 90-day, it's a 90-day period, and this is actually a year. So they're under the gun even longer as a result. So, but again, they would be members, union members.
So can they be terminated before the year is up?
If their evaluations, yes, Mr. President, if their evaluations do not, you know, come up to what we would expect, they could be dismissed, yes.
So it's not really a year?
It's not.
It's up to a year.
Yeah, it's a year evaluation period, and I would have to get back to you on, if, let's say, for example, a person clearly isn't performing after three months, let's say. I think, I think we have the ability to end their services, but I'm not sure if it's a one-year, a full one-year commitment, that I'm not quite sure about, but I can get back to you on that one.
Okay. Thank you much. Any other question? Commissioner Gill.
What, what type of precedent does, understanding, accepting all that, so, but, I mean, it does set a precedent for us moving forward that we could continue to hire in this way if, if we think that a list is not readily available to us in that amount of time? And I appreciate that. I mean, I, what I'm hearing you say is it's not the administration's intention to circumvent the civil service procedure, and in fact, it sounds like maybe we need some help at the state, you know, level to change some of the process here because it's the second time we've been presented with this as a board, and it, it sounds like there could be a legislative potential fix that would help counties in this, in this respect. But I think it's important for those of us who, you know, do hear loud and clear what civil service is meant to be and support, you know, following those processes that the county is not looking to send some type of precedent to work around those protections.
Through you, through you, Mr. President, that's correct, Commissioner Gill. In fact, again, if there was a list today, we would be operating off that list. We even asked civil service, well, can you give us the names of the people who have applied to get on the list? And they can't, they won't, they can't do that. So we tried a different way to do the same thing to kind of stay with that process, but they, they won't give that information out. So, you know, I have to tell the board, this is, these are incredible times, and I understand how with the shortages and stuff that civil service gets behind. I mean, they're, they're trying their best too. But in the meantime, we have, the point you heard earlier about the, like, the guards, the correction officers trying to deal with that shortage, and now here, and dealing with this shortage, it's the same issue. How do we continue to do what we have to do? And I think all of us feel particularly concerned and about the fact that, you know, folks who are in most need of help, we can't serve them as well as we might like. And I could, I don't want to put down what the other, what the, what the union folks were saying, but I think to some level, a little bit of like over bureaucratic, kind of short-term bureaucratic issue, people need to get help, and this is how we can do it. And I think the other thing I should say too is that, again, I don't know the number, but I think when I was speaking with Director Green about this, I mean, this is not going to, you know, overturn the number of family service. We have hundreds of family service workers. We just need some additional help right now, and when the list comes out, we'll get back to business.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All of you. As has.